Hi. Welcome to Belmont Journal. I'm Steve Rosales, your host. Today, we have the Chair of Belmont's School Committee, Megan Moriarty. Good afternoon, Megan. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you for having me, Steve.
Especially it's a busy time of year just before Thanksgiving. It's -- but thanks for finding some time.
Yeah, it's good to get away.
School stuff never ends. It's always going. So, okay, it's November 21st. And so what's the hot news? A recent announcement, I hear. Belmont's longtime Superintendent John Phelan has announced his departure, his impending departure. Did that come as a shock?
You know, John has been here now for almost 10 years, which is a long time for a superintendent to be in a district. It's a challenging job to lead a district. And so he's done a lot in his time here, right? We have tackled the issue of space. And we have a brand-new 7th through 12th school that will be opening the 7th and 8th side next year. So that building will be completely open. He's led the district through COVID, which I don't think has been an easy thing for any superintendent in any district or anyone in a leadership position. He has, you know, a lot of initiatives that have started under his role have been very successful in our district. And so I feel like he's put the district in a really good place for us to move forward and under new leadership.
Well, geez, time flies, I guess. So he's been here 10 years. It seems like that's, well, you know, 10 years. That's, you know, and I suppose no one has any training in COVID or a pandemic. And if they do, it's all theoretical. This was actual practice. And it lasted years and years. Gee, my goodness. Still going on to some extent. Little lessening of the protocols. But continue to wash your hands for 20 seconds. Be vigilant. It's still out there, people, but, you know.
Well, we will be. So today, the kids will be coming home from school with a COVID test kit.
Really?
Yeah, so the district was able to procure enough COVID test kits for all of our students and all of our teachers and staff. So although the protocols haven't changed, we will be providing those. And so everybody is being asked to test before coming back to school on Sunday.
Really? So, okay, so all the students, I don't know. There's, I don't know, roughly 4,500 plus or minus for staff. So there's, you know, 5,000 people, whatever that may be. They all have a test kit. You're asking them all before they come back to test themselves.
That's right.
Is that, that's just a voluntary type of a deal?
It is a voluntary.
On our system?
It is a, let's all take care of one another in this community that we are in.
Do you find parents, or at least the students, if someone is ill, they'll stay home type of a deal? You finding any of that type of stuff? I mean, we've had regular flu out there. I know because I got a flu shot, but.
That's right. Our nurses are very good about putting out information to the community. And so I think it was last week or the week before that they put out a very comprehensive email about also flu and RSV and as well as, you know, COVID symptoms. So I think that they're trying to keep parents informed and certainly asking parents to continue to do the regular checklist before sending your child to school if they have any symptoms.
Do you think people are actually doing that? For the most part, that's your observation. Obviously, you're not there every day, but.
Yeah, so I mean, just from my perspective and the information that I receive, I haven't been told of any upticks in particular in any school or classroom specific to COVID. But, you know, little kids come back to school. Many of them were home for a few years. So I can imagine that there may be more outbreaks of cold and flu this year amongst especially the younger children. My children are in sixth grade. They haven't missed a day for school yet. And I do ask them often if other kids in their classroom have been out. I would say in the beginning of the year, in September, they would say that yes. But lately, they haven't, they haven't messaged that to me.
Well, that's good. And so there's no ongoing COVID testing in and out of the school. All of those, what I'll call, protocols or during what I'll call the height of the pandemic have sort of been put aside.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, well, that's good.
And we're not the only, I mean, that's across the board. That's, you know, the state of Massachusetts. And I do have quite a few friends with children in private schools, too. And I haven't heard of them doing any regular testing either.
Okay, well, that's good because, you know, we're hitting the holiday season. We'll see how that works.
It's true, yes.
But still, it's okay. Coming back to John Phelan. So he's been here 10 years. We've built a new school. I'm sure there's a whole bunch of things that you put through during his tenure here. But he gave his announcement. And he still has time on his contract, right? He's leaving early.
Yes, John does have a couple of years. He's leaving early, but he's leaving at his retirement.
That's what I'm saying, his choice.
Yeah, his choice.
It's his choice.
Yep.
Well, we wish him well. I mean, I'm sure it's tough. I mean, it's a difficult job.
It is a difficult job. I think one thing that I've really come to appreciate, being able to work with somebody who's in a leadership position like that, is one of the most difficult things is having to make decisions in times of stress. And, you know, many of us maybe take for granted the fact that there has to be that one person making those decisions. And not everybody's always going to like them. But for instance, we did have a bomb threat at the school a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, the decision needed to be made. Do you release the kids early from school? Or do you keep them there in wait to find out if it's an all-clear? And in the end, it wasn't all-clear. That information has to go, you know, we work with the police department and the fire department, as well as state-level departments to investigate. And John, you know, had to make the decision at that time that he was going to release the students. And there were many factors that went into that. One was that it was right before lunchtime. To have all of the students leave the building and wait outside for potentially an hour around lunchtime can lead to challenges for faculty and staff who are trying to keep the kids outside and calm for an hour, not to mention parents and what have you driving by and wondering why all the students are outside, right?
I would think, sure.
And so he very quickly made that decision that they were going to early release, which meant calling bus companies, getting the buses to come for students. Our Director of Food actually packed up over 200 lunches and gave the kids the lunches to go. And John immediately phoned me and sent out, very quickly after that, a comprehensive email of the timeline of how that decision was made, which he did in conjunction with the police chief and the fire chief. So having to execute all that, making that type of decision in a challenging situation, I think for me is something that a good, effective leader can do. And I would hope that we would bring in another leader who can do that same type of thing in a challenging situation.
Okay, when we were talking to prepare for the show, we chatted prior to the show. And you mentioned that Belmont isn't going to be the only town around that's looking for a superintendent.
That's right. There's numerous other towns right now going out to look for superintendents.
Like who? They seem to be all out at the same time. I wonder why.
Yeah, well, I think that.
Maybe COVID, does COVID burn out or?
I think that being a leader who has to make difficult decisions in challenging times has really been the theme, probably for many superintendents over the last three years. And I can imagine that after three years of having to do that, that you might want to be able to spend a little more time with your family and maybe ready for a change after that.
Well, I'm not begrudging that, that's for sure. It's been difficult times. What other, so a lot of them, you mentioned, you ticked off several surrounding communities that have been looking currently or will be.
So some of them right now are Newton, Dedham, Lincoln Sudbury, Melrose, Bedford, ourselves. And there are a couple others out there that I.
Out of those, is there one that's more comparable, say, to Belmont? Newton seems to be a little bit of a different situation.
Yeah, they're larger.
Bigger city, larger.
They are, they have a mayor. Dedham, you know, might be comparable to us or maybe more so a Lincoln Sudbury. You know, Lincoln Sudbury, of course, is the two, both Lincoln and Sudbury. So that makes it a little bit different. You've got Bedford, who is nearby. They only had a, they went out for superintendent in 2019. And now they're going out again for superintendent. So, you know, I think that also, again, says something about even for those districts who had recently brought in a superintendent when COVID hit, it's been very challenging.
I don't know what the average, I'll call in quotes, lifespan of a superintendent or the expected job expectancy.
It's usually three to six years. So it's usually, you know, two, three-year contracts is a typical superintendent time.
Okay, you know, you read it, the Boston, we're not certainly the city of Boston, but they seem to have gone through numerous superintendents in the last 10 years.
That's true. I mean, Cambridge has cycled through also. So, yeah, it's not an easy job.
So how does that, how do we go about figuring out who's going to be the next one? There's a process, a search process?
There's a process, and I'm just learning about this process.
That's all right, I mean.
There's been one thing after the next since I've been chair. But it's exciting. I think that it's also an exciting opportunity for our district. And I think that we have met as a school committee twice since John announced and came to the conclusion that we are going to, despite the fact that there are other districts out there looking, try to find a full-time, permanent superintendent to come in at the beginning of the next school year. Our district is going to be experiencing, you know, two more transitions. One is the 7th, 8th school opening and those students coming up next year, which really requires some leadership. And then, you know, all through next year, the district will be preparing for the next transition, which is the 4th graders coming up to the Channery. And so that's another huge transition. And along those lines, we have budget to be thinking about. And I think that we just really feel like we would like to try to bring in somebody who would stay and be our leader through those transitions. So the first thing that we have to do is we had to form a subcommittee to do kind of the logistical work of this. And so myself and member Jeff Liberty will be heading up that subcommittee. And right now, we are preparing a scope of services to hire a search consultant. So once a search consultant is on board, which hopefully will be in the next couple of weeks, they kind of run the show. And so they will be the ones working with our subcommittee, as well as the school committee, to convene a search committee, which will be made up of not just school committee members, but also, you know, faculty and staff and leadership in the district, some leadership probably from the town, parents and students. And so we will have a search committee. In addition to having the input of that search committee, who will help to come up with some of the applicants that we will interview and then will be recommending finalists to the full school committee. We will be having focus groups within the community. We will be having one-on-one interviews or small group interviews with a subset of the community. And we will have a community-wide survey also. So lots of opportunities for families and community to have input into what characteristics of a superintendent that we are looking to bring into the district and then of the applicants, who among those applicants are we looking to actually interview as finalists?
Sounds so simple.
Right, so that's why. But that is why it's really important, I think, for us to have a search consultant. And all of the districts and the chairs that I've spoken to so far, which includes all of those that I mentioned to you earlier, have hired search committees. And there's quite a few of them out there. Some of them are more nationwide. Some of them are more local to New England. There are also smaller boutique consultants. And they range in terms of their services, in terms of their prices. And so that's why it's important for us to have kind of a scope that fits our district and see who will bid on those and go from there.
Okay, well, you know, I can't say for certain always, but quite often, when a leader of an organization or a school superintendent, for example, you know, leaves, the assistant has sort of made the interim acting superintendent or something, interim superintendent, you know, during that interim until a new one has been chosen. But in this instance, the Assistant Superintendent Janice Darius has already also announced her departure. She's been with the system for a long time. And it's a well-deserved, I'm sure, retirement for her.
Oh, my goodness, yes. Again, just so many initiatives. I think our faculty and staff are definitely sad to see her go. They feel so supported by Janice. They really appreciate everything that she brings to the district. And so I do think they're sad to see her go. I think that it has been a known departure. Janice has been here, she is retiring. She did announce earlier. And, but yes, it'll be a big loss to the district. But then, again, it's also another opportunity for the district also.
Well, I'm happy for her. I think selfishly, you know, you wish that someone that's worked so well for such a long time would stay and have some, continue to have institutional knowledge, continue to know how all everything seems to work.
She does, I don't think it's.
But now we have both people leaving. So now you have to replace both at the top. I don't know what happens, but I wish you good luck. Sounds so simple, the process you laid out is so.
I think the process is really important. And I think that if we have a good process going forward.
No, of course it is, I'm making a little fun of it. I didn't know it was going to be quite, that's a lot of stuff, the focus groups, the whole, you laid out quite a bit of input from various constituencies.
Yeah, we hope so. I've tried to, in the last two weeks, done a lot of research behind how this happens.
Is anybody still on the committee? And probably not, but 10 years. Has anybody had on this current school committee been around long enough to have picked John Phelan and done this process? Or is this just all?
No, they weren't. But there are people in the community who I've been able to reach out to, like Lori Slapp was on the committee at that time. I believe Lori Graham might have been chair. I haven't spoken to her about it. But so there are people in the community who, Ralph Jones was on the hiring committee for John Phelan. So there are good people in the community who we can kind of pick their brains about. They went through a different process. They took a couple of years. There was an interim superintendent here for a couple of years. And I think that, like anything, there are, you weigh the pros and the cons and where you're at.
All right, well, stay tuned. I guess, I guess that process has begun, right? Or at least it's search committee, subcommittee, and you'll be, you know, keeping people posted as things develop.
We will. We will have actually a tab on the website where we will have our own webpage about the superintendent search.
All right, well, good luck to that. And good luck to, you know, Superintendent Phelan and Assistant Superintendent Darius.
Well, he's still here for the rest of the year, so.
So he's scheduled, what, till November, a little bit?
Yeah.
All right, all right. Well, you mentioned then two transitions, 4th grade up to the Channery. I guess, I don't know, I guess they're going to call it the middle school or whatever it's going to be called, 4th through 6th.
It's the Belmont Middle High School, yes. And I know that there's been some questions about that recently. I was not involved in the process when they went through the naming of that school. I believe that happened when they were going up for the debt exclusion. And there were many parents and community members involved in it at that time and students. I've been encouraging people when they have questions about the process or just questions about, you know, what's going to be happening in terms of how the schools are going to be operating, who's going to be in charge or timelines. Director of Configuration and Transition, Carla Coza actually has a webpage. And on that webpage, there are links to a community and family input form. So if you have any questions, you can submit them there. And then she has an FAQ that she updates with answers to those questions on a weekly basis. So people can go and take a look at that.
And she's doing both. There are two transitions that you mentioned. One is putting 7th and 8th graders in the high school campus down by Clayford Pond. That'll open up, if everything's on schedule, September 23, next September, opening the next school year. So that's some transition. But then, to fill the spot at the now Channery is the 4th grade.
Yes.
So is Ms. Coza doing both of those transitions? Or is she sort of concentrating on one?
So we have Ms. Coza for a one-year position right now, which we are very thankful that we were able to fund for one year. And so we are milking her as much as possible this year. So she is in the midst of planning for and executing the 7th, 8th transition. She is also beginning very soon and throughout the spring, preparing the district for the 4th grade transition. So that when she is done in July, we will have a plan that we will be able to execute next year for that transition of the 4th grade.
So, and so she has a tab somewhere. Where do we find that?
If you go to the Belmont Public Schools website, there is a tab for reconfiguration. And that is her place where she puts everything down. I can't say that is where everything lives because Carla is like a show these days. She is at the different schools, meeting with the teachers and the staff. She is out in the public doing in-person and virtual parent forums. And of course, then, doing the district-level work as well.
So I don't know the exact address, but I'm sure if you Google Belmont, Mass, I've done Belmont schools and you come up in California. There's a lot of Belmonts around, apparently.
Belmont, that is true.
Belmont, Mass, public schools, grade configuration, or it would come up. You can poke around and find that relatively easily, I would think.
Yes, and she's always over also, you know, meeting with SCANSKA. And so she's wearing a lot of hats this year, for sure.
Okay, well, good luck to her.
Yeah.
And, okay, we've just had a debt exclusion. And one passed and one failed. And one that did not fail was unsuccessful was for the rink.
That is correct.
So any thoughts on the aftermath of the unsuccessful debt exclusion vote? What happens to, what are the plans? Or to the extent there are any? What are, what's going to go on, do you think?
Well, you know, I feel really thankful that there are so many people in the community that support our students and our student athletes. And so it was really wonderful just to see that support for the youth. And here, I know that some of the hockey players came here. And I believe some of the field hockey players came and did their kind of shout-out for the.
They did their shout-out, yes, they did.
For the debt exclusion. And so I love seeing students kind of stand up for things that are important for them. So I think there was a lot of positive energy around the rink. And, you know, we will move forward. Our student athletes right now are not on the hockey teams practicing because they don't begin until after Thanksgiving. So hopefully, I believe the rink, from what I've heard, will be open after that for them.
It's pretty cold out today, so.
And it's very cold out today. So hopefully, they'll be able to begin practicing on the rink right after Thanksgiving and move on with their season. And, you know, as far as the rink goes, I was on the rink building committee. And should the select board decide that they want us to keep moving forward with that work and potentially put it back on the ballot, you know, I would get behind that and continue to do the work. I think that there's some messaging that we can do to really inform people about how much that facility gets used. I'm not sure that that got out there as much as we could have. And I think that there's some operational budget numbers that still need to be run in terms of if the, you know, we have the PV and the solar on it and what that could look like in terms of operational budgets. We didn't have time to run all those numbers, so.
Well, it was an accelerated process, to be sure. I mean, the library's been going on for years and years and years and years. And I get it, but, you know, the rink, and it was on a fast track with some, you know, I guess, a finance committee and a bunch of subcommittees to get to you. So the building committee, I'll compliment them. I mean, I've been on building committees. It's not an easy job. And, you know, hopefully, it'll get worked out. But I'm sure it will be.
Yeah, I think that one thing about the compressed timeline is that, you know, in any good process, you need to be able to sit down and have hard conversations and bat around different ideas and get more information. And I think what was hard about the compressed timeline is that when we would go out to have a discussion, it was so close to the vote that people would kind of hang their hat on whatever was said in that meeting. And it made it challenging to really have deep discussions with good information because we just didn't have the time for that. And so I think it would really behoove the community to be able to have us engage in more of those discussions and make sure that we're addressing everybody's questions.
Okay, well, I wish, I wish luck. I mean, it'll, until it fails, and it will eventually. So having skated on it, it is what it is. But so good luck in that regard. Okay, we got a few minutes left. Okay, so you mentioned, and we did chat. Last time, we spoke about issues about, I asked you, how did the opening of the new high school work? And there was an issue of lunch, that there wasn't enough time, there were long lines at lunch. But you just mentioned a little earlier that they made 200 lunches when they sent the kids home with the incident threat that you had. But you actually went down. Has the lunch situation figured itself out?
I did go down. I do try when people have questions and concerns, I do try.
You've got to admit, this young lady, she goes and she gets to the root of the problem.
So I went, I went to the high school and was able to be there for a lunch.[1515.78] And I have to say that it, it was a, a much nicer place to eat lunch than I often eat lunch. So the space is beautiful. It is sun-filled. The options for lunch were numerous. There was a, you know, a vegan option with different, like, parfaits and fruit. And there was your typical burgers and fries. And then they always have a pasta option. And they always have kind of a more international option. So the day I was there, I think there was some fried rice dish. And it was quite amazing.